At 6:30 PM, all councilors are present. Calendar and Communications.
Hi.
Do you have anything?
I've been in touch with, I've been in touch with Mr. Jonathan Lamas who has written to the council concerning the noise at Chapter 1. And he's told me that as a result of Mr. Burt's intervention, the noise level at, in the surroundings of Chapter 1 was better this weekend than it has been in a long time. So hopefully things are moving in the right direction now.
No report.
I also had a complaint about the noise at Chapter 1. A verbal complaint on Burt.
A who complaint?
Verbal complaint.
I apologize, I cannot hear you at all. You and me, I'm sorry.
Are our speakers on?
Yes.
Is that better? Okay.
Do you need him to repeat that?
I would appreciate it.
I said that I had a verbal complaint about Chapter 1.
Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. I received an email regarding an event being held on Friday, December 15th. The Groton Town Police and the sub-base police are hosting an event at Cardinal Honda to benefit of Special Olympics. Top on top, there's going to be like a coin drop, I guess, correct? Chief Fasaro is nodding, yes. So that's this Friday, the 15th, from 5:00 AM to 9:00 AM at Cardinal Honda. And I think that's it. So we're on to item 4, Approval of Minutes. So I'll entertain a motion for 2017-0286, Approval of Minutes, Committee of the Whole.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Morawcik. Is there any discussion?
I had a couple of things. First of all, under 2017-0263, that's page 4 of our packet, Mayor Flax noted that it's been a contentious budget year. And he proceeded to state, and I quote, "Efforts by Senator Summers have restored funding to Groton." I felt that was a little inappropriate to only point out one of our representatives, not all three. And I don't want to put words in his mouth, so I make a motion to just strike that sentence.
Is there a second to strike that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Atwater. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Councilwoman.
Wouldn't Richard be the only one that could really approve this, since none of us were sitting for this meeting?
Normally, it's, Clerk McCausay would like to speak, yes.
Just to let you know, people tend to want to abstain from voting on minutes that they were party to, but the minutes belong to the town council. So they're your minutes, so you should be voting on them, not abstaining.
Could you repeat exactly what you're voting on now?
We are voting to, it's item number 4 on the agenda for this evening. Approval of Minutes, 2017-0286, Resolution Accepting Committee, the whole minutes. Resolve that the minutes of the Town Council Committee of the Whole, meeting of November 14th, 2017, are hereby accepted and approved. And Counselor Heed made a motion to strike a line from in the minutes. That was seconded by Counselor Atwater.
Which line was that?
On page 4, under section 2017-0263, former Mayor Flax noted that he quote, or I quote, "Efforts by Senator Summers have restored funding to Groton." My feeling is that was a political statement. If it had been, you know, fair and balanced, he would have said "efforts by our three representatives." So my feeling is it's inappropriate to use town documents to endorse a candidate. So my feeling was we should strike that sentence.
I had, I believe it's a correction, on page 6 of the minutes. About half, a third of the way down the page, it says, "A motion was made by Counselor Morawcik, seconded by Counselor Antipas, to table this item. The motion failed, eight in favor, one opposed, Counselor Morawcik." And I think the vote is backwards, Counselor Morawcik, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so it should read eight, one in favor, eight opposed? Is that how you recall?
That's right.
Okay. If that's acceptable, okay. Does anyone else have anything to add as far as the minutes go? Does everybody understand what the clerk was saying? We were not here for the minutes, but as a formality, we should be approving the minutes, accepting them further on behalf of the other council. Counselor Schmidt.
I just feel that although we may feel that was an inappropriate statement to make, I don't think we can change the minutes because that is what happened.
So Counselor Heed, I don't recall the exact language of that. Would you like the assistant to the manager to go back in and listen to it to see if the language is correct? Or do you still wish to have that?
The language was correct, I was sitting right over there.
Okay. Counselor Atwater.
On your motion, on the, Counselor Morawcik's motion was to table this item.
Correct.
And the motion failed.
Correct.
Eight in favor of the motion failing, one?
The motion was to table, only one person voted in favor of tabling, that was Counselor Morawcik. So it should read one in favor, eight opposed.
Okay.
Counselor Zepari.
I move we adopt the minutes with the correction about Counselor Morawcik's motion to table.
Okay, we also have the amendment that Counselor Heed made.
I personally agree with Counselor Heed, and I also agree with Counselor Schmidt. This is simply a reflection of what was said by someone else at the meeting. It did not have an effect in ordinance or resolution by the council. And therefore, I don't think it needs to be addressed any further.
So the motion was to accept the minutes. His motion was seconded, so that's what's on the floor right now. They've made the correction and they've acknowledged that the vote was listed incorrectly for Counselor Morawcik's tabling motion. So we need to vote on the minutes as amended, as the proposed amendment first. And then if that fails, then we could go back and we could take another stab at it if you'd like. So is there any more discussion? If not, we'll vote on accepting the minutes as amended by Counselor Heed. Okay. All those in favor of the minutes as amended by Counselor Heed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Can you leave your hands up, please? So opposed are Zepari, Schmidt, Obrey. Are you voting nay?
Yes.
And Franco. So that passes five to four, as amended. Okay, so we are on to item number 5, Unfinished Business.
We haven't voted on the minutes, Counselor.
We just did.
We voted on the amendment.
We voted on the minutes as amended. Alright, so item number 5, Unfinished Business. There is no unfinished business listed, so we are on to item number 6, New Business. Item number 2017-0246, Introduction of Ordinance, Amending Various Ordnances to Increase Fines. And we have Chief Fasaro with us this evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out.
Just to reiterate what you said, Mayor, yeah, this Friday, we have what's called Top on Top. We'll have police officers on top of Cardinal Honda soliciting funds from people for the Special Olympics. So I understand it's going to be a cold day, so they'll be bundled up nice and warm.
When will they start, Chief?
Five o'clock in the morning, and it goes through Saturday until about 11:00. I'm here before you today to discuss and to solicit your approval for a referral regarding fines that are governed under ordinance 11-56, which would increase parking fines from $10 to $20, filing violations from $25 to $50. And those would double after seven days of non-payment to $40 and $100 respectively. We also ask for an update to the town ordinance, Article 4 specifically, regarding establishing a solicitation permit of $25. These were all done a little over a year ago. We looked at comparative towns in southeastern Connecticut to look at what they were using for their fee schedule. Ours was severely outdated, going back to the 80s. It was established by town ordinance at that time, that $10 for parking violations was appropriate, maybe in the 80s it was. We've experienced some parking violations where people have just flat-out told the officers, "I'm willing to pay the 10 bucks, it's worth it for me." As many of you know, we've had some parking problems in various parts of the town. Mystic comes to mind, we also have parking problems in some of the areas where there's summer concert series as well as other locations. So I'd ask that you'd support that, and certainly I'm prepared to answer any questions. In your packets, I do believe you have our analysis, a matrix that we put together showing the other communities around here and what their fees are. So I believe that the ones we're asking for are pretty consistent relative to our surrounding towns.
Are there any questions for Chief Fasaro? Counselor Zepari.
First, Chief, what happens to the money that you collected with these fines?
Goes to the general fund.
Goes to the general fund. And the second question is, why is it necessary to double the fine after only seven days?
That's been, I believe that's part of the ordinance, but when people don't pay their fines, there's, you know, punitive assessment that goes along with it. And I think that's consistent with what we've done in the past, and other communities do a similar approach to it.
If I may, Mayor, I would comment.
No, sir.
I think that, you know, we should have fines for parking violations and that sort of violation that discourage people from saying, "Well, it's cheaper than going to the parking garage." Or, "I'd just as soon pay the fine." We want to discourage that kind of behavior. Yet at the same time, it's not a major crime. And there are a number of reasons that could be justifiable for people to park in violation. For instance, someone with Crohn's disease or ulcerative colitis having to get to in a toilet as an emergency, they take the only space available so they can get out and get to the toilet. But there are a number of other things that can come up similarly that would be compelling to the driver of a car to do that. I think they should pay the fine. I think they also, we should be cognizant of the fact that many people in our community are living hand-to-mouth. And getting together 40 bucks or 20 bucks is more difficult for them, and they need to, at time, to arrange their affairs so that they can get it together and make the payment. So I propose to you that we extend the period of time to make a payment to 30 days instead of seven days. And that would give everyone a chance to make the payment. I think paying a fine, a parking fine, no matter how small it is, is a pain in the neck. And it's enough to discourage me from wanting to park illegally. But I, but I do agree with you, and the fines should be raised, but I think they should have more time to pay before it's doubled.
And maybe to help alleviate some concern, and I understand that, there is a due process component to this, where they can plead, they can contest the parking fine, which would then give them a hearing with a town hearing officer. But I certainly appreciate and understand what you mean for the.
For my own sake, even if I have an excuse, I'd rather pay the fine and get it out of my hair. So other people may feel quite differently about that, and they have the right to due process. But I think that there are people, I said Crohn's disease and ulcerative colitis, also diabetes and other things would give compelling reasons for people to park in an unlawful parking spot. But there are, that's just one person's point of view.
Town Manager Burt wanted to address this.
I don't disagree with the sentiment. I'm just going to point out that if the council, right now, it's after seven days it doubles, and then after 14 days is when it goes to the next level of illegal action. So if you push the seven days up to 30 days, you'll want maybe 60 days for the legal action. So after, you'd have the base fine for the first 30 days, then it goes to the $40, and then after 60 days, it would become a legal action if they didn't pay. So just to consider.
Counselor Parker, and then Counselor Franco.
But Chief Fasaro, most departments, if I'm looking at this correctly, they do after five to seven days, then go up to doubling the fees, correct?
Correct.
Actually, I've been, I've been ticketed for parking near courthouses in Hartford and in, and in Waterbury, and both have allowed 30 days.
Counselor Franco.
It states in here that the owner or operator must report in person to the town hall. They can't mail their ticket back.
I believe that's what the ordinance says for their, if they plead not guilty or if they want a hearing, they have to go in person. And there is a hearing officer, and again, I think that's consistent with what we see in other communities as well.
Counselor Morawcik was next.
Yeah, I'm for this seven days, $25 fine. I think the Chief, you've done a review of the other towns, and I think you're in the best position to understand the purpose for this and how, why it should be done this way. And I think, you know, in line with the other towns, I think we should keep it the way you wrote it.
If, Mr. Manager, if we so chose to change it, change it, do we need a motion and a second to do that, or would we just express by consensus?
This is just the introduction of the ordinance. Today, you're going to have a public hearing, assuming you pass the resolution on the agenda right after this. And you can make those changes at that point, you know, if you direct us, basically give us some direction, and we'll update it for that public hearing.
So then just consensus is, the consensus to leave it as is? My opinion is, the Chief, as Counselor Morawcik said, has done the due diligence, so I would be inclined to take his lead on this. Counselor Heed, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, real quick. There are a few different standards here, like the town is going for seven days, the city has five days. We recently made that change while I was on the council. New London is 14 days, Norwich is 96. So it's not unreasonable to think that we could go for 30 days if that's, I just want to throw that out there for everyone.
96 hours.
Could we, could we vote on that as a recommendation? We'll see what the council's feeling is on it. I've heard a couple of other people agree with me and a couple disagree with me. So I would, you know, if we want to give the Chief some guidance as to what to put up for the, for the hearing of this change, then we should actually say what the council believes.
Let's, Chief wanted to make another remark.
I was just going to merely also point out, it did undergo a legal review by the town attorney's office, so I just wanted to point that out. And that certainly doesn't weigh on the length of time people have to respond if the body, if the council decides that it's going to be an extended time, we can certainly accept that and make the changes accordingly. But this was just based on what was already on the books here in the town of Groton. Our interest was upping the fines to make sure that there is some deterrent effect to the fines that are established.
So Counselor Parker.
Are there notices after the seven, well, proposed seven days? Do you guys send the notices out, or does a company do it for you?
I'm sorry?
Does another company do it for you, or does the town hall do it for you?
We don't, I believe we have any going out right now.
Is it printed on the ticket what the rules are?
All of it's on the ticket. In fact, we've kind of delayed getting new tickets, new ticket books, because of the potential change in ordinance.
Okay, so I'd like to do this in two parts, please. So first of all, is there consensus that the fine should be increased? Does anyone object to increasing the fines? Okay, so then the question becomes, do any of you want to see the length of time before it doubles, increase? So just a straw vote, non-binding, just to give the, to give the Chief guidance. How many of you would like to see that time increased? So two of you, three of you, okay. So the majority then is fine with the recommendation that's before us, yes?
Just to point out, once you have the public hearing, you could always take comment into consideration, and change it at that point. You have plenty of time to think about it.
Okay. So then you don't need any further action from us on this ordinance, correct?
Well, just on the resolution itself, setting the public hearing.
So you need no further action now?
Well, on the, there's a resolution right after this for the actual setting of the public hearing date.
Right, but 0246 we're set with. Okay. So then on to 2017-0247, a resolution setting a public hearing on ordinance amending various ordinances to increase fines.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I assume you don't want us to read everything, correct?
I, there's discussion again.
One second, we need to find out, do you want us to read any of this? It's multiple pages, I'm not sure how you want this to proceed.
I think just an affirmative vote that you want to set the public hearing for, we'll bring a resolution to January 2nd, a meeting for approval, and that'll set officially set the public hearing for February 6th.
Alright, so the motion to set the, to set the public hearing has been made and seconded. Counselors of Perry.
I would have the same objection here that I had with the previous, that is that the ordinance calls for fines to be paid within seven days or doubled. In addition, that the ordinance calls for fines to be paid in person at the police department rather than mailing them in. I don't know where, if we can say that we're in line with every other community by requiring personal appearance to pay a fine for minor violations of ordinances. Should be a mail-in thing. We want to, we're trying to make Groton as friendly to the residents as possible and to visitors as possible. Some people will get tickets when they're visiting from another state to make them drive all the way back to visit the police department. I think it's appropriate for them to mail their fines in, and it should not inconvenience anyone else.
So this, what we're voting on now is just setting the public hearing. So any of the contents of the ordinance itself will be discussed at another time. So this is just to set the hearing. So we're not discussing any of the contents of the ordinance at this point. So are we all, shall we, is there more discussion on whether we should set a hearing or not? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of 2017-0247, Resolution Setting a Public Hearing, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? That passes unanimously, yes?
Just to mention, I very much agree with being able to mail in the fees, so LJ and I, the Chief and I will discuss that. I think that's something that should be done, able to do.
It is a matter of practice, that's essentially what happens now, but maybe to update the ordinance, right?
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question. If we do that, does that have to go back to the attorney, or can we just do that?
That's a simple enough change, we should.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your fundraiser for the Special Olympics.
We'll see some.
Yes.
We'll be there.
Alright, so we are on to 2017-0287, Supplemental Appropriation for Contingency. And we have Finance Director Cindy Landry here this evening to address this. Hi, thank you for coming out.
Nice to meet all of you. For you that don't know me, I am Cindy Landry, Finance Director. Some of you I know already. Okay. I actually have two resolutions before the council tonight. The first is a request for supplemental appropriation out of fund balance to the contingency function. When we put together the 2018 budget, we knew that we.
I'm sorry, can you get a little closer to that mic? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
When we put together the 2018 budget, we knew that we had several contracts that were out that would be subject to negotiation, and those wages were not included in the department's budgets. And since that time, we've had several that have been settled, and those contracts have been approved, and I have come to the council and had some contingency transfers to cover those wages. But at this time, we have the police contract that has been approved by the council, and I will be coming tonight asking for a contingency transfer to cover those wages. But the contingency account is insufficient to cover the police and some other transfers that we have pending. So this would be a supplemental appropriation from fund balance to increase contingency so that we can then transfer out from contingency to other departments. Makes sense? I'll give you a little bit more information, I forget that you all weren't part of the budget process. The contingency function was originally approved at $650,000, and that was a, we did increase it in the '18 budget, knowing that we were going to have all of those wage increases probably coming forward in fiscal '18. It has a current balance of $344,376. But as I said, I do have the police pending, and we have the steelworkers, which is in negotiation, and I will be expecting, once that contract settles, that we will also be having a transfer out of contingency to cover those wages also.
Okay, so I had a question, just to clarify and make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So right now, we are at $344,000.
Correct.
We're looking to add $350,000.
Yes.
To contingency.
Mm-hmm.
And then $415,000 is going out.
Correct.
So that will leave us with $279,000 for the remainder of FYE 2018.
Correct.
Okay. So just as a point of reference, normally, well, I shouldn't say normally, but in recent years, when they do the budget, they usually set it between like $250,000 and $350,000 for the entire fiscal year.
So we're going to be looking at from December to June with $279,000, so hopefully that
will be sufficient to get us through. Just to give those of you an idea who aren't sure what we normally have in contingency.
Counselor Parker.
Are there any, are these the last two?
Yes.
So we won't have any come up at the end of, in February or March, or anything like that?
No, we have, the police contract has been approved, and that one, we just need to transfer the wages. And the steelworkers is the final one that we have, is in negotiations at this point. I did want to add one other, I am asking that this supplement be referred to the RTM 653, so that we would be able to get it into the '19 budget, so that we won't have those skewed numbers when comparing '18 to '19.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Your documentation included a table with transfers from contingency to functions. These are transfers that have already been made?
Excuse me for one second, please, sorry to interrupt. I believe that's the next resolution? So Finance Director Landry is here for two items, 0287 and 0288. We're working on 0287 right now. So we're looking at just getting the money into contingency at this point. And then the table that you're referencing goes with the next resolution?
Yeah, I know, but it seems relevant to this, because she says that they had $650,000 and they spent some of it.
Yes.
And so that's why they don't have it for what they need it for now. So I'm asking about what it was spent for. Is that correct?
The table, the table that's in the second resolution that I'm here for, that money needs to be transferred. But we have transferred previously for other contracts out of contingency. That's why there's only a balance of the 370, excuse me, $344,000 that's left.
So the transfer from contingency to functions is something that is proposed and has not yet been done?
No. Both of these are proposed tonight.
Okay.
But right now, I'm just looking to transfer from fund balance an additional $350,000 into contingency, so that we would have those funds available to cover upcoming wage increases and any other unforeseen, like we would have a bad winter, and we would need to transfer money into Public Works for snow plowing.
Okay, how much are we needing for wage increases?
Right now, I need $415,000 to cover existing contracts that have already been approved. And that's what the second resolution is for.
That's the second resolution.
The second resolution, yeah.
That's what you need for $415,000.
So right now, I'm just looking to, to put money into contingency, so that I'll have it available to transfer out.
Okay. And so the wage increases are already covered in that second.
Yes.
Motion.
Yes.
And you just want $350,000 for whatever?
To leave a cushion in there for future unforeseen, anything else that may. To be, to leave a cushion in there for future unforeseen, anything else that may be happening between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Can we make the transfer at a later time when you discover that you need it? Right now, it's for an un, unnamed thing that you want 350,000, now, just want 350,000 moved over there. Am I correct?
Well, we would-
You don't have a specific intent for it right?
No, we do not. It's not earmarked at this point, but frequently at this time of year, we would, if we hadn't had, um, if the wages had been part of the budget process, we would not have had to have all those transfers out of the contingency fund.
Right.
And we would have money available now.
Right.
It's, it's normal practice to have money in contingency in order to pay for things as they come up over the course of the fiscal year. Um, at the end of the year, the last quarter, I believe-
Yes.
-is when supplemental appropriations can be made. The charter doesn't allow any supplemental appropriations throughout the rest of the fiscal year, so that's why, um, you budget for contingency to be held in there for emergency purposes.
And the contingency is-
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, contingency is not only used for wage transfers, there's, like, council initiatives or a, a piece of equipment that made me an expensive repair, it's used for various things throughout the year.
Council Morawcik?
Yeah, I, I should, and, when, uh, when it's all said and done, you'll have about 179,000 left?
No, when, uh, after this one, I think it's going to be 279.
Which is a little less than the normal contingency amount.
Yeah, 279.
Are there any other questions for the Finance Director? Councilor Franco?
What is, uh, after we move this, what do you expect the unassigned amount in the general fund balance to be?
We, it, there's about, um, $10 million in the general fund right now. I don't believe I brought that exact number with me. I apologize for that.
Yeah, it's in the email you sent to us earlier today.
Well, my que, well, with the money coming back from the state and the money that has to go out to the Board of Ed and having the 11% in there, is that, what's going to be the balance?
Well, the 11%, we, we, the $5 million that came back, we put that in there, um, recognizing that we probably were going to have to give some of that money back to the Board of Ed, and I believe it was about, I, um, I apologize, I didn't bring that information with me, I think it was about three, three and a half million that would maintain our 11% of that 5 million. So we should be able to, uh, we should be able to maintain that, 11%.
So, but you don't have the actual, what's going to be unassigned after everything goes out?
Well, right now, we're only looking at the 350,000, and I'm, I'm, it's about, there's about 10 million in there now. I'm sorry, I did not bring that number with me. I'm, and we just got the audit draft yesterday, so I'm ha, I'm trying to go through that now.
Councilor Ober.
You may not know the answer to this question, but how long are these agreements for that we've just come to with the police and so forth, the union, basically?
Most of them are three-year agreements, but some of them were, um, from 17, we had to pay retro wages for 17. We, they were, the negotiations started, but they were not finalized in that year.
Okay. I just, um, one of these, I was on the RTM when, when the police budget, when the police came in for their additional funds, and my feeling is, it's probably not the appropriate place for what the heck, uh, my feeling is that if the union can get increases for their people, I think that's good, that's their job, but I don't think the town has to accept it. I think we have to, we, we may be able to say to people, look, that's what your union wants, that's fine, so if that's 20 people that you're trying to do, but the money covers 19, I think in the future, we should go with the 19. So, just for future discussion, you'll know where I am on that.
So then, we are, we're back to deciding whether we want to move money into contingency or not, so, uh, Councilor Morawcik?
I'll make a motion to approve the supplementary appropriation-
Second.
-of contingency fund of 350,000 dollars-
Agreed, George.
-and refer it to the RTM.
Um, do, do you need the whole resolve, Red?
No, I think that will be run at the full council.
Okay. And so, you, you included the 653? You included the 653 in your motion? So moved by Morawcik, seconded by Schmidt?
Right.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, uh, Zepary is opposed, and abstaining. So that passed eight to one to zero? Okay, we are on to 2017-0287. Anyone like to read the resolve for this one?
We did 87.
Oh, I'm sorry, pressed off the wrong one. My apologies. 2017-0288, contingency transfer for wage increases and other items. Resolve that 415,000-052 is transferred from the general fund contingency function 1074 to the following general fund department's functions, and refer to the RTM 653 for approval, and I referenced the chart that the Finance Director provided. Is there a second? Councilor Parker, seconded? So, now, Councilors of Perry.
Well, there, there are, I understand that this money is largely for negotiated settlements with unions for wage increases, but I noticed that 63,650 goes to management.
That's true.
Did management have a union?
No, that is, when the former, um, town manager retired, um, there was a payout that had to be made to him, and that was part of the manager's budget now, and that was unbudgeted, so they're not, there are insufficient funds to cover that in the town manager's budget.
Okay.
We have to pay them off, huh?
We have 271,589 to public safety.
That's correct.
Is that a, a union negotiated, uh, wage?
Yes, that's the poli, the, that's the police union, Police Benevolent Association, PBA. Would you like me to explain the rest of them, or?
I, yes, if you would.
Okay. This, the 415,000 are for, um, there's three parts to it. Previously, I had come to the council, uh, when the CILU, which is our clerical union, had settled, and I had, um, put forth the resolution to move fund from contingency into the departments to cover that. After we did that, I rec, I realized that I had a, um, an error in the formula, and I did not transfer enough money. So this is, part of it is to cover the additional funding for the CILU that was already, that I attempted to cover in an earlier resolution. It also was to cover the additional cost to the town manager's budget and the police contract.
And if, if I might just add, um, in your packet, um, Finance Director Landry has provided a very, um, clear breakdown of everything. She provides the background data, she provides our alternatives, and then the details in the resolution address the three parts of this, um, as she was just explaining to us. So, the outgoing manager, the police, and then the other union contracts are all outlined here, and that's standard practice, that when staff comes before the council, they provide this information to you. Are there any more questions for the Finance Director on this particular resolution? Seeing none, then we'll vote on 2017-0288, contingency, contingency transfer for wage increases and other items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? I don't know what the pounding is, sorry. Okay. So that passed nine to zero, zero. I think you're, are you set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, at this point, I'm going to ask if it's okay with the rest of the council if we jump down to 2017-0283, authorization for town manager to fill town clerk vacancies? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. So then, I will entertain a motion for 2017-0283. Can I make a motion? Moved by Parker, is there a second? Seconded by Heath.
Second.
Okay. The authorization for the town manager to fill the town clerk vacancies, 2017-0283. Moved by Parker, seconded by Heath. Uh, is, if you flip where we just were, you're going to skip Gary for now, sorry, Gary, and go to the memorandum to John Burt, CC Robert Zagami, from town clerk, that's in McCauser. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you like to talk to us? Pages are not numbered, sorry. Can't really reference yet.
Yeah, I know.
I think, um, Zagami's going to go up too.
And this is, um, Mr. Zagami, who is the Human Resources Director?
Yes, yes.
Would you like to present?
Oh, well, um, should I start by explaining? I don't know really how to proceed, if you have questions already formulated, or?
Uh, why don't you just give us, because the general public doesn't understand what's going on, so if you just want to give us an overview?
Sure, okay, so-
Thank you.
Yes, so, um, a week and a half ago, uh, my deputy town clerk, um, uh, was, um, informing me that she was going to retire, um, which, which, um, which is great for her, but not so great for our office. So I immediately, um, uh, put to motion what to do, uh, to fill that position, and we have a, um, hiring freeze, so, um, I have to ask the town, uh, manager and the, um, HR director, and ultimately the council for approval on making any changes to that, to that, to hire anyone. So, I also am asking to, um, hire, well, no, how, how do I put this? I'll, I'll hire a town, um, deputy town clerk and two assistant town clerks out of existing staff, and then, and there'll be an, uh, office assistant, uh, position that'll be hired also. So it's really kind of a shift within, I can't call it what I want to call it, but it's a shift of, um-
Personnel?
Personnel.
Well, the best way to put it is, the deputy clerk, deputy town clerk ended up being the, uh, the one who retired, so we have to fill that position. The next request is that there is a assistant town clerk that we want to fill that position, okay? Uh, because there is a chance that that assistant town clerk may move into that position, which is a deputy. So it's cascading downward into, um, having multiple vacancies, possibly, depending upon how the posting goes. We have to kind of post one position at a time here. The, um, one of, her other request is that the, uh, the assistant town clerk, we want to have two of them, because Betsy feels that, uh, she's a little bit hamstrung, hamstrung when it comes to, uh, running the operation, because some of the positions, their job descriptions, uh, kind of prohibit them from doing the full responsibilities when somebody comes to the front door there, so she wants to be able to have people not be, uh, prohibited without, uh, having the job description and be able to move right into those positions. So, we're talking about hiring a deputy super, uh, how should I say, superintendent?
Why not?
But it's a deputy town clerk, that position's vacated, then what we want to do is we've, we want to move up a position to a, um, assistant town clerk from one of the office assistants, and then hire an office assistant.
Exactly.
So it's kind of mapped out, if you can follow that?
Okay, and in the packet that we received, there's a, um, there's a diagram here to explain that. Mr. Town Manager, did you want to comment?
I was just going to comment that because that person leaving, it was at a higher pay scale, there are some savings with these changes. For the rest of this current year, there's an anticipated savings of 5,415. For next year, the savings would be 10,029, so there's savings.
Um, Councilor Heath?
That's what I was going to point out.
Okay, thank you. Or, do the councilors have any other questions for, um, Mr. Zagami or Ms. McCauser?
I do.
Parker and then Natwater?
Thank you. Question on the, the two that are now the two gentlemen about, uh, will they be both be trained if that's the way the, we're going to go that route? Are they already doing the jobs now, or do they need to be cross-trained?
They'll, they're, they'll be cross-trained, it's, it is a cross-trained, well, the whole office is cross-trained currently, but they'll be trained in, in the new functions that they'll be doing, absolutely, by myself and by, uh, my new deputy.
Okay, so that I don't have to go outside and do additional-
No, 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 this, it's all in, in-house.
Councilor Natwater?
My question is, just on the unlikely chance that the current people do not apply for the new positions, would you then have to hire a new deputy town clerk?
Absolutely, if, if no one applies, then I would, well, this is, the, uh, the deputy clerk will be, um, in department posting, so if no one in my office wants that position, then I'll go outside to the, the entire town hall, government, and anyone qualified for that could, could apply, and if I still didn't, then I'd have to seek, uh, funds to, to go outside, and I, uh-
So there, there's the remote chance that there won't be any savings, is that?
No, that, there, those, those jobs are, are, are union contracts, and there's steps that you go from one to, you know, so a brand-new hire would start at the first level, and, and current, my current deputy is at level five, I believe.
The, the deputy, right now, she's at, uh, 31 years here, so that puts her at the top step, so there's not a real chance that we'd be able to a top step when we hire someone?
If there's no further discussion, we will, um, all those in favor of authorizing the manager in accordance with the charter to fill the vacancy in the town clerk's office, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so that passes unanimously. And at this point, um, we, procedurally, we have to do something that may seem kind of strange to those of you out there. Uh, we're going to temporarily recess the committee of the whole meeting, and then we're going to go into a town council meeting very briefly because we need to act upon the restructuring of the clerk's office. So I'll take a, I'll, I move recess, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Parker. All those in favor, I don't have to take a vote on that, we're recessed. So the committee of the whole is recessed at seven, 17?
What, you have? Resolution, authorizing the town manager to fill town clerk vacancies?
This here, resolve, okay.
Uh, resolve that the town council conveys authorization to the town manager in accordance with the town charter 6.2 to fill vacancies in the town clerk office.
Second.
Seconded by Heath. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the town council? Moved by Heath, seconded by Morawcik. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, moved unanimously. Special meeting is adjourned. To bring us back from recess for the cow, which is a funny meeting name. So we're going, thank you, Mr. Zagami and Madam Town Clerk. So we are back to 2017-0289, supplemental appropriation for town hall complex, and we have Public Works Director Gary Schneider with us this evening. Hello, Mr. Schneider, good to see you.
Good evening. In your package is a referral that I've written, and just, and this is real brief, I usually try to keep it to a page, uh, but it's a little bit more, uh, I have more information or I can answer any questions you have. Just briefly, this project is to, uh, the request is to, uh, complete the project that we had placed out to bid. This is the code, uh, code compliance project for Fitch Middle School, which is right next to the, the town hall, it's the old Fitch Middle School. This is what is really the third phase of putting that building back into some shape that we can use. The first phase, we put a roof on, which is the wing A, what we call wing A, which is the double-story building. The second phase was put sprinklers in wings B, C, and D, that's the, uh, one-story sections to include the old school on Deebel Road, and this is the third phase. There are the code issues, uh, that need to be addressed before we can move the recreation program that's currently at William Sealy School and the storage that we have over there into Fitch Middle School. The work that needs to be done is, is both fire code and building code. Uh, the fire code issues are, we have to put, uh, re-establish some firewall between the sections of building. There's some fire stopping, which is those, those penetrations that were made for pipes and wires over the years, people just punched through the wall, those have to be re-established. There's some fire doors, I do believe that have to be modified and completed. On the building code side is, we have to do some egress, uh, issues, uh, and, uh, there are several toilet facilities that need a partial rehab. We are not gutting the entire toilet facility, the male and female areas, but we have to put the handicap toilets in to the new code. Uh, so what we have done is, is, as barely, we are meeting the code, the codes, and it requires this amount of money. The department had estimated this to be $400,000, but that was the request that was approved by the town council on the budget. During the budget process last year, the RTM reduced it by $100,000, and I'm coming back asking for 75 of that $100,000 back. There was one option that we bid, it was a bid alternative, which was to put a dance floor in one of the rooms, uh, per the request of the, uh, Parks and Rec Department, but that was about $25,000, and the Parks and Rec Department took a look at it, and for the value of asking for, uh, more funds for that, or the value of that price that the contractors had put on that price, is, that, it, it really wasn't there, that wasn't, uh, that was not a good value added to the project. The bids are good for 60 days. Uh, if the, uh, committee of the whole approves, uh, this, uh, this, um, this request, we will notify, we will ask the two lowest bidders if they will hold their bids for 60 days. It's about, it's close to almost 30 days into the bid process right now. We did receive six bids, three were under the $400,000, and four were above, so is this the right price? This is the right price for it. The low bidder has been qualified by the architect that we, we have used and also what we had, uh, taken a look at the firm, too. So- So what the department is, is asking for, and it should be a resolution as part of your package, is that the existing Town Hall Complex, and we call this project part of the Town Hall Complex because this project involves the whole site itself, from Fitch Middle School, the old Fitch Middle School to Town Hall. We have lumped a lot of stuff into that. So it's to increase by $75,000 the appropriation I have on the capital reserve fund, fund balance. And the finance director has told me that there are funds available for that. And if this is approved by the town council, again, this needs to go 653 to the RTM so we can move this along in the process. Right now, if we do get the extra funds, and this has to go to the RTM, we will, we are planning to get recreation moved from Sealy School into Fitch Middle. And Sealy will be totally vacant, it'll be cold storage. And the planning department's working, of course, on, on the sale of, or the reuse of that property, the sale of property. They'll be put into cold storage and everything will be moved out there. If this is not approved by the town council or the RTM, the funding, the extra funding, we do not have a project. And then once the building, William Sealy, is vacated, then recreation programs need to find other homes and there just aren't. We did look in other locations to put these, there just aren't, there's just nothing. And then wings B and C and D will not be able to be used at Fitch.
Councilor Morawcik had a question?
Yeah, Gary, I have two questions for you. You said something about the dance floor, you didn't think, did I hear you right?
Correct.
I, I think it's, you know, without seeing the, seeing it itself, I think it's a well-worth item to consider because Parks and Rec brings in money. And, and that would pay for itself, you know, maybe in a year, a couple of years, but it would, it certainly would bring in revenue. And they have a dance floor now and they've got a lot of kids doing that kind of dancing. I think it would be really worthwhile reconsidering that.
My rec, this was coming from the Parks and Rec director, as he looked at, the existing wood shop does have a wooden floor. Of course, the dance floor gives, has a little bit more give and take from what I understand. My wife tells me I can't dance anyways. But this is coming from his recommendation, is that that amount of money for what he will get is just, it's just not worth it. So I would, that was his recommendation.
Is that from the architect too?
Uh, no, the architect just takes what needs to be done and puts it, puts it on paper. If the dance floor is added to it, then the appropriation will need to be $100,000 and not 75. The $75,000 along with our bid process, that gives us a 10% contingency because we are doing work in an existing building. I don't know if I'm going to run into pipes in the walls, asbestos in walls. So there is a 10% contingency built into the budget. And of course, if that is not spent, we close the project out, that goes back into the capital reserve fund balance.
While you're doing the project, can you, can you reconsider it?
If, if there's funding available, we can come back. If I don't need the contingency, we can come back and revisit that and come back to the town council, yes.
Okay, and then my second question is, every time I drive past the school, I see Fitch Middle School. Can you take the sign down?
I, I, the town manager asked me to do that and then I recommend, well, I, my advice to the town manager was, I need to put something up again. I need to get first responders there. So I need to put up a big address, 61 Fort Hill Road. I need to get him something.
Town Hall Complex.
That, that could be, it's for the direction of the council. We need to have something on that building to get the first responders. And that's the mutual aid people, Paquonic Bridge knows where it's at. But if there's a mutual aid event there, we just can't go to a red brick building. I don't want people going to Town Hall when it should be next door at the other red brick building, so.
Put it under consideration.
I'll, I can put anything up on the wall that town manager, town council, or someone directs me to.
My only concern about the Town Hall Complex is people might go to the wrong building to do things. I think we should either just put the address.
Or some other name.
So perhaps when, when we move all the Sealy programs in, we can address the name at that point and make it official. I had a couple of questions, first of all. So if, if this passes through the council, when is the projection for when Sealy would be vacated?
Uh, we are, we will be looking at the beginning of June 2018.
Say it again, please, beginning of June?
Beginning of June 2018, next year.
And then my second point is a comment with, with no offense meant to the dance program at the Parks Department. The children that are dancing at that level are beginners and a wood floor is perfectly suitable for their purposes. It's when you get to be an older dancer and you're on point that you need to have the special flooring available. And so perhaps, within a couple of years, when we have some more money, we can move, putting a new floor in. But a lot of people in the performing arts high schools and everything, they dance on wood floors, so. I'm okay with it as it is at this point, as a mother of a dancer.
Councilor Obray?
Um, I think it'd be good if we put the new logo up on the front of the building. Give it the banner down, let, let everybody see it. Just, just a thought.
Good idea.
Um, it's a great logo and it certainly would attract attention. And as far as that building, I think having the rec center there is, is great. And I think it should be something that's dedicated to the children of Groton. For a long, long time, we've not had a proper place for the kids to go. I hope someday to see a lot more with the, with the children. But as far as doing anything else with that building, I think until there's a real plan in place, we should not spend any more money. I appreciate the fact that the roof was done, it'll keep from having a lot of damage if it hadn't been done. But this should not be a piecemeal. We should do what we can do for the rec and other programs that use it. I know we have a lot of young men, I don't know if the women do or not, that play volleyball and other things there. And that's wonderful. I'd like to see the youth programs there. But we can't keep inching out on that building. We've got to have a plan as to what we're going to do. If we're going to bring the Board of Education down there someday, that might be fine, but not piecemeal. And, and so just to tell you that, you know, I hope that, and I'm quite sure with you and with John, that wouldn't happen, but I think we have to be very clear that I for one would not, will not support going anymore with the piecemeal planning. There may be a lot more that's going on that I'm not aware of. And if somebody in the future wants to let me know about it, if there's a master plan, you know, then that would make it a lot easier for me to be comfortable with it, but.
If, if I could ask, correct, I would need funds to do something to Wing, Wing A. Wing A, which is the two-story building, for us to occupy that, it's not only the funds to do it and, and the council's wishes, but it's also the code officials. The code officials, which is the fire code and the building code to get anyone in it, to sneak a room in there or to sneak another use in there. So I have directed my staff, is that part of the building, the double, what we call Wing A, the two-story building, will not be occupied, will not be used by anyone because it doesn't meet the fire code, doesn't meet the building code. And we, we're not authorized to use it. We will maintain it, we'll make sure the windows are sound, the envelope is, is good and for any future, you know, future use, so, so determined by the town council.
And no mold, right?
No.
No mold.
That's what, we need to keep it heated. Uh, so the boilers are running, there, there is a, if you see a request in my cap, my boss and manager, Rosia requested my capital project to replace those existing boilers. That services the whole school and now go from fuel oil to gas. But as for use of Wing A, it's, it's promoting.
Town Manager?
Just to mention, I completely agree on the piecemeal approach, other than my one piecemeal thing I wanted to do with the fire marshal where we were going to look at putting that position into, Paquonic Bridge Fire Marshal into our annex, which would require moving the equipment to a room for the voter registration, which is a very small project, but we don't have anywhere else to put them. Otherwise, we, and this is part of making the development process easier. So just one little piecemeal.
So you're talking about putting two other departments down there?
What's that?
Are you saying that you're putting two other departments down there?
No, um, the, there's that, if you've seen in my reports, there's the request to put the Paquonic Bridge Fire Marshal over at the annex. Well, the only place to put him is where the voter registration equipment is and voter registrars do their work at. We need to move them somewhere and there are certain parameters for that equipment, for safety and cooling and all that stuff. And the only real spot we have is at the, at the Fitch Middle School. It's a very small project, but otherwise we can't move forward with the, with the fire marshal, which would save in the development process by not having to go to, over to the Paquonic Bridge Fire Department for a plan review.
Now, I think that the purpose of what you're trying to do is excellent, I just don't want to see any inching over.
I completely agree.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Schneider? Okay, would someone like to read the resolved on the back page here? Including, please make sure you add the 653 to the RTM. Councilor Heed?
We have resolved that fiscal year ending 2018 CIP number six, Town Hall Complex, be increased by an additional appropriation of $75,000 from the capital reserve funds, fund balance, I so move. Second. Oh, refer to RTM 653.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that pass unanimously, 970. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. I'm not sure what the pounding is, they must be doing work next door. Okay, so now we are on to 2017-0295, payments to outside agencies. I'm looking for it. Do we have a, let's see, we go to planning and development?
I don't think there's a, I think it's more for discussion purposes.
Okay, so we'll let the town manager lead on this?
Um, it really comes down to, now that we have the, the state funding in place, the budget in place, there were just a couple of questions, really only one pertaining to that. We've been starting to release payments to different agencies, ambulance services, that sort of thing. The former council had wanted to wait on the fire departments to actually have them in for a meeting. So we're looking for direction on, is that current wishes or can we go ahead and start paying fire departments?
Does anyone have an opinion on this? Councilor Schmidt?
I think that we should make those payments and still ask them to come in to give us the wrap-up for the year for the fire department. I think it's something very valuable to have, but I don't think we should make a point that they have to do that in order to receive those funds. I think they should be given them.
May I ask? What, how much is involved and what is it for precisely?
Cindy, do you know how much for the fire departments?
This is the pilot funding, correct?
Right.
Right.
The total is $246,000 for all the fire.
Could you, did you say 246,000 for all the fire districts?
242,000, and that to cover, that's the city, Paquonic Bridge, Mystic, knowing, Old Mystic, Groton, Long Island Point.
Center Groton and West PB.
And what is the money for?
Well, the town of Groton receives money from the state for payment, payment in lieu of taxes. And we have, share a portion of that with the fire districts because the money only comes to the town. Because it's to pay for state-owned and tax-exempt properties. They don't receive any, any taxes on those properties, just as the town does not. So the state has a payment in lieu of taxes program where they partially reimburse us for those monies and we prorate a share of that and we pass it on to the fire districts.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Morawcik?
Yeah, I'm opposed to the $246,000 because I, I think it was a mistake that was made by previous councils back in the 1980s when the state gave $200,000 to the town. The town decided to take half of what the state gave, give 100%, or 100,000 to the fire districts and the town kept 100,000 dollars. Over the years, that money increased by the state, but the portion given to the, to the fire districts remained the same at 100,000 dollars. Up and, and it was questioned by previous finance committee, finance directors, as to the 50% rule. No official policy was ever set, it was just more, this is the way we do things. And back in 2003, one of the fire districts questioned the amount of money being given to one of the districts. And the town manager at that time increased it, the towns portion, to 150,000 dollars thereabouts, or 100, whatever. So the number came, that's how the 100, the 246 came about.
It's two pieces.
In 2003, the state was giving 800,000. Now they're giving, they were giving at one time a million dollars and I think it dropped back to 800 or 800,000 this year.
564 this year.
Okay, so they dropped it back further.
Yes.
But my, my point of contingency is that the town has always taken everything except 100,000 dollars. And I don't think that's fair to the fire districts for all the service and the work that they have to perform in maintaining the, their equipment to service the town, the towns for fire protection. And that's why some of the fire districts are running into some financial problems. And so I, my, my thing, I realize we can't do anything now, but I'm just objecting to the 246,000 dollars. I just want to let this council know. And I, I think this should be brought up in a future time so that we can discuss the exact amount of money that these pilot, this pilot money is given to this, to each one of the districts. You know, for instance, in, in Paquonic Bridge, they get, they have 72% of the fire requirement, 72.2% of all the fire, the, the amount of land that's taxable. And so they only get a portion of like, a small percentage of that, that amount out of the 246. I think they get about 150,000 dollars.
154.
154. And they have 72% of the, the.
Tax exempt, state-owned.
Which is the largest and they, they have to provide, that, that fire district has to provide its own full-time personnel. So it's a burden on them to provide this, this coverage and they're not getting, I don't believe they're getting their fair share of this.
So, so to recap then, your objection is not to the concept of the pilot, it's to the apportionment of the pilot money. So that's something that we could look at at a later time.
That's correct.
This is money that's being held out from the budget from the spring. So is there any objection to paying this out now and then we could, we could look at the formula?
No, I have, I have no objection to paying it out now, but I'd like to see this policy reviewed in the future.
Understood.
He, well, just as a, as a point of information, each of the fire districts has a surplus tax that it places on the citizens in that district, though, am I correct? To support the fire district.
An additional mill rate for each fire district, correct? However, they don't receive any tax dollars for state or town-owned property. And for example, Paquonic Bridge has, we could go through the list. They have this building, they have the library, they have Claude Chester, they have Fitch High School, they have Grasso Tech. All these properties that they have to protect, but they're, they don't receive any of that. The mill rate is not applied to those buildings. So this is a, a way to somehow give back a portion of the costs for them providing the protection to all those vital town estate-owned buildings. So if there's no further, is there further discussion?
I, I just wanted to make, mention that I think that's why it's important for us to have the meetings with the different police departments. And then they can explain to us individually what they kind of have an idea that their budget's going to be and what portion they're, they would be expecting. And then it would make it a whole lot easier for us to make an informed decision.
Chief Winski, I believe, would like to, would like to speak? This is the chief of the Paquonic Bridge Fire District, correct?
Yes. I just wanted to just, like, basically a little bit, so maybe to have a kind of an understanding of the impacts it has on taxpayers. Uh, there's over $450 million worth of non-taxable property in Paquonic Bridge. That's either state-owned or in trust or town-owned or city-owned properties. If 52% of our district is not taxable. So the burden is kind of laid on the taxpayers within that district. So the pilot fund that has been developed has helped to defer that in some way, shape, or form. Um, we cover approximately 42% of the town landmass in the town. And then it's divided up amongst other departments in smaller amounts. But we cover about 72, as the bridge, 72.2% of all the non-taxable properties are in Paquonic Bridge. So, uh, we are concerned about the impact on our taxpayers, which are all of our taxpayers. And we, we believe that we're just as much part of the town as the town is itself in its own entity. So we're, what we want to do is promote growth. Uh, we are interested in pushing forward with development. And if we create a cooperative or more. we create a cooperative or more affordable environment, then what happens is that development becomes a little bit easier. Because when a developer comes in here, they look at a lot of factors, whether it be education, public safety, and taxes. It's, it's very important to the developers. So I just wanted to pass on a little bit, so you have an understanding of the amounts of non-taxable properties that are within, I can only speak on my district, but all the districts have impacts. But we do cover about 72.2% of all the non-taxable properties within the town. And obviously, it has a, a big impact on us. We are the downtown or the commercial district, and it, and we are very inspired by some of the things that we're hearing. When I first came here, we had one or two new construction projects about three years ago, and we're reviewing about 42 different projects right now. So it's, it's heading in the right direction, but we want to be a part of the success of this town, and we are part of the town. And I would look for you as a group to give us whatever support that you can, so that we can take and lessen the burden off a select few individuals within the town. And I appreciate you giving me that opportunity.
Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, do you know whether or not the mill rate will change for the fire district tax if you do not get this money?
I haven't gone through, it, it depends on the grand list. Fortunately for us, last year, we went up in our budget, yet we reduced our mill rate by two-thirds of a mill last year. So there is positives that are coming forward. I believe that our economy is now just in its infancy of turning around. There's a lot of things locally that are starting to happen. And I think that as a town, a unified town, a unified council, the RTM, and all the districts work together, we can get things really steamrolling. I think we're heading in the right direction. And if we play our cards right, I think there's nothing but success in our future.
If there's no further discussion, do need, go ahead, sorry.
I was going to bring up another item, the second item too, or do you want to finish this first?
I, I think there's consensus that we want to pay the fire districts, correct? Yes, okay. And then what was the other item?
The other item is, we're still holding the city's FYE 2017 road dollars, 738,501, the thought being that we would get through the, the cost comparison study that was recommended by the arbitrator in the 2016 arbitration. We're wondering, should we continue to hold that? Should it be released to the city?
Is there, Councilor Overy?
I make motion that we release the funds that are overdue.
Second.
So moved by Overy, seconded by, is it Perry? Any discussion on this?
Do we have the results of that study?
Well, we, we're still doing, going through the RFP process.
When are we going to have the results?
If all went well, we, we're down to the two finalists, we're getting some samples from them to choose between the finalists, who just to hire someone, we still need a budget amendment, though. From the city, you'll have to pay, we're thinking, Mayor Hedrick and I, I think we each split 50/50 the cost of that study. Probably, it's about a four-month study, so once we go, let's say we were able to give them the go-ahead in January, so we're talking May, June.
Which study, say?
As part of the arbitration.
Benchmarking, cost comparison study.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? So all those in favor of releasing the funds to pay our obligation to, for the city highway budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So moved unanimously? There was no ordinance, but I guess that's good. Okay. All right, so we are on to 2017-0291, filling of telecommunicator one position, and this is in your packet. And is this Mr. Zagami back with us, or is Mr. Burke going to handle this?
Bob's coming up.
I'm trying to place the lights, so I'm trying to get any noise from that store. What, basically, this is our emergency communications office, which is our dispatch center for the fire, the EMS, and police. And what's happened was, last year, they had started out with 13 slots there for the dispatches, and only 12 were approved. In the interim of the 12, one became vacant last year. And also, we're looking at one this year that's going to be a vacancy, as we have a retire, a person retiring. So in order to maintain our 12 people in there, which is minus the one, we're looking at a March, I believe it's a March, early March departure, and by hiring somebody else in that slot, it would probably be about the same amount of money, around 20,000 from the town he retires in March to the, the town in, in the fiscal year which ends June 30th. So the idea behind hiring in this position is to not fill the position by overtime, and that's one of the things that would happen here. In the event we don't fill that position, it'll all go to overtime, which is a regularly scheduled shift.
Are there any questions? There was a, an information sheet in the packet. Yes, Councilor Murawski?
Yeah, Bob, does this fellow have to have certain certification prior to being hired?
Well, what we'd have to do is, there'll be some training, but they won't have really certification. We're looking for experience, and when they come in as a telecommunicator one, that will be the training period, and they'll, in a certain amount of time, they've got to advance to a telecommunications three, which means they can man all different phones there. So there's three levels, one, two, and three. Start off at one, and it advances.
The other question I have is, I've seen more of you since we put the hiring freeze on than I have in the last few years.
Is that a complaint?
No, I just want to, is that a good thing?
Well, these are essential positions. That's, it's kind of, it's kind of different what this hiring freeze has really set up. It's not, it's essential positions that we naturally have to hire for. The freeze even, even freezes those positions, as opposed like, we need new police, or filling in retired people and such like that. We're not talking about adding additional positions in any of these cases, except maybe the police support specialists, that would be a, a new position, but that was replacing another position that was in record keeping. But basically, all of these, these positions are just filling vacancies, not adding positions to the, to the budget.
The town manager wants to address-
Just while this topic's up, I was going to mention, we have a lot of overtime in that department. We're looking at options on how to reduce that, which may involve hiring more part-time people. So Bob has taken the lead on that, working with Joe Sastre to dig into that. So you'll probably be seeing some more changes at some point for this department. But in the meantime, this is absolutely needed.
Other gentleman?
I move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it Perry or Murawski? Any further discussion or questions for, Councilor Heath?
Is that a union possession?
Pardon me?
Is that a union possession?
Yes.
And Councilor Ever?
Okay. In this situation, kind of like with Betsy's, will there actually be more money to work with, since you have a senior person leaving?
Yeah, there wouldn't likely be, for a certain amount of time, until they advance to their class three. Then it'll become a little more expensive, but they'll still be, as they're experienced, they'll probably be coming in a lower level.
And I think, I read this, but I'm not remembering all of it now. You were talking about then bringing in another person part-time?
No, there's a, one of the people, no, I didn't mention part-time, but I think-
We're looking at options of overtime and potentially getting some part-time people. That's something we're reviewing. I think there is one part-time person.
There's a, one of the people is working part-time because he was looking to retire and could work the specific shifts. There was a lot of overnight shifts, so he did come down to a part-time position.
And the agreement, the union agreement allows for that.
The last paragraph mentions the part-time in your, your work here.
Oh, okay.
My intent is to see if some of the applicant finalists might be interested in a part-time job that could lead to full-time employment when, so I think, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, yeah. I kind of felt like you were easing towards another person, and I just wanted to be a little cautious of that. I know the importance of it, I don't take away from that at all. And I would not want to be the one calling and not having somebody answering the phone. But again, the same thing, is we are in a position, until things start to come together a little bit more, that we have to be very cautious of what we're doing. But probably nobody's any more aware of that than you.
Yeah, I, I think I've got a little bit of experience coming from 19 years in an ambulance company. So I kind of have dispatch experience a little bit, and the trucking industry and all that, so not to bore anybody, but, but what I'm saying is, there is probably, with my experience, is probably some opportunities, as John has mentioned, with bringing some part-timers in. And I think, years ago, they probably thought the system failed because they didn't have regularly scheduled part-time shifts. My part would be to have regularly scheduled part-time shifts, so part-timers know where they're going to be working, and wouldn't be at their other jobs. Someone called them up and saying, hey, can you come in? No, I can't come in right now, I'm working. And, you know, that, those types of scheduling things, I think would help with the overtime runs. I think we budget for about over 200,000, and I think we probably reach around 250,000 in overtime, because there's scheduled overtime, et cetera.
Not only do we think there could be some cost savings, that amount of overtime is, you know, is stressful to the employees too. So that's another factor we have to look at.
So if there's no further discussion, we can vote, all those in favor, in favor of authorizing the town manager to fill the telecommunicator one position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously? Is that it for Mr. Zagami, or is there more?
Thank you, Leanne.
That's it, thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, so we are on to Office of Planning and Development Services, Overview of Initiatives, 2017-0284. And Mr. Reiner is here, along with Mr. Brock.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Here with me tonight is the Planning and Development Services team. I'll allow them to introduce themselves. I do just want to load up a PowerPoint presentation really quick. While I do that, I think Paige is just going to hand out a quick packet to everyone. Give me one moment to load this all.
Certainly. And would you mind introducing yourselves while Mr. Brock is passing this out for everybody at home?
Sure. I'm, I'm Deb Jones, I'm the Assistant Director in the Office of Planning and Development.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Deb Jones.
Thanks.
Kevin here.
Kevin Quinn, Manager of Inspection Services.
We like your mug. Is that new?
I'm waiting for it.
Paige Brock, Economic and Community Development Manager.
Very nice. So this is the logo Leanne was referencing, correct?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that look great in front of the building?
Did you bring, bring a mug in for everybody?
We don't have that budget, but we could certainly work.
There's nine of us, and we have managers for ten.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Yep, we're fine, ready to go, guys?
All right, so what we wanted to accomplish tonight was to give you an overview of our department, what we do, and some of the initiatives that we've been working on, the direction we received. Not necessarily a deep dive into any of the projects we're working on, some of the things that we're working on now, we will be bringing to you in the near future, to really dive into some of these topics. We could spend over an hour just talking about one topic individually. So within the Office of Planning and Development Services, there's planning, there's economic and community development, and then there's inspection services. And each one of them manages one of those particular divisions. And one of the things that we've been trying to do over the past few years, I've been the Director of Planning here for almost three and a half years, is taking the direction that economic development is a very big priority in this town. Previous town council set aside 200,000 back in 2014 to say, we want to make economic development a very high priority, if not priority one in this town, and get all the partners or all the players working together. And when I first arrived, I think that top slide was kind of a little bit more where things were. We only had one person in the town working on economic development. We now have more, we have a lot of initiatives. So we're trying to get things moving in the right direction. And one of the great things about what's happening right now, we have a lot of opportunity with electric boat and the growth. Most municipalities don't know what their job outlook is going to be over the next five, 10, or 15 years. Because of EB contracts alone, we have a very good understanding of how much development pressure we will be getting, and that we have the time now to get ahead of that and plan for that future. So one of the first big initiatives that we undertook when I first got here was doing a market analysis. For those of you that have been on the RTM or on the council before, or that have, you know, met us and talked to us before, you've heard about this market analysis. This is to get a pulse on where are we in the town, understanding our regional economy with retail office, housing, hospitality, our infrastructure needs, what type of development pattern, smart growth versus conventional development, and where do we need to go? Because zoning and other things aren't the end-all, be-all, and we don't want to plan for things that our market is not dictating that we need. So one of the things that we've realized through this process was, I think a lot of folks have heard now, we've been relying on the big three, General Dynamics, Electric Boat, Pfizer, and the Navy for a long time to help push our local economy. And that has put us in a little bit of a box, you know, a number of years ago, when Pfizer knocked down a building, I think that really raised the concern of a lot of people. So how can we diversify our local economy? And working between economic development and land use planning, and again, one of the benefits of having all three divisions within one department is that we work together very well on a day-to-day basis to meet these goals. And one of the things we learned through the market analysis, on an average day-to-day, we have about 26,000 jobs in Groton. Of those jobs, about 80% of those people commute to Groton, and only about 20% live here. So, and we have a need for newer, high-quality mixed-use development. Not mixed juice, not Nantucket nectars, but mixed use, multiple uses, office, retail, residential, all together. So the, the market analysis laid out an action plan of things that we needed to do. I'm not going to read through all of these right now. Our market analysis is on our webpage. There's a pretty good summary of the beginning of that document, I think, in all of your packets. I'd strongly encourage you to take a quick read through that. It's pretty exciting information. And the biggest thing that came out of our market analysis was establishing a sense of place in Groton. How can we make Groton different than every other suburban community around us? And you look at places like Mystic, that has quality of place. The city of Groton, there's really a sense of place to some of those areas, as opposed to our Route One corridor, which needs some help, and we'll get to that with some of our other initiatives later. And making sure that the workforce that we need with EB has a place to live. If we want to start growing the town and increasing that quality of place, we need to get people to live here, and not just commute here. One of the other initiatives that we did with that market analysis was a regulatory review, looking at our subdivision regulations and our zoning, which hadn't been updated in over 30 years. And how can we streamline that process, make it more user-friendly? We're hearing from the development community of the things that we should do, and bring it up into where development patterns want to go, and where the market wants to take them in the future. And regulatory reform, one of the few slides I'll actually read from, is the equivalent of, of setting the table, but it doesn't bring the stake to the table. That's where some of these other initiatives that we're talking about, and how our economic development functions really work to make things happen within the town. It's planning, it's zoning, it's economic development, it's public investment, but it's also private investment. You'll hear us talk a lot over the next, every time you see us, about public-private partnerships. And that's really what we need to do if we want to bring Groton forward from an economic development standpoint. So how do we implement these plans? One of the questions that I got a lot from council members and others initially was, well, we did the market analysis, we did the regulatory audit, isn't that it? Isn't everything done? Those were the plans identifying what needs to be done. Right now, we're actually doing all the things that were recommended in those plans. I don't like to do a plan or a planning effort and then have that plan sit on a shelf. We need to implement that plan. So a lot of the initiatives that we're going to talk about now are the, the, the action items that we've been implementing over the past couple of years. One of them being the rewrite of our zoning regulations. We've completed part of that, our water resource protection district regulations. We're working with the zoning commission now to get through the rest of those regulations over the course of the next year. Incentives that we've been doing with our economic development program. So one that we recently adopted was the airport development zone. This acts sort of like an enterprise zone, a little bit different, but similar types of benefits to that. Some of the other things, other incentives that we have include the enterprise- Some of the other things, other incentives that we have include the enterprise zone that we have now in town. We have local tax abatements, and we've been working with the Small Business Association for the state, as well as other programs, to try to figure out what are the types of incentives that Groton can give to direct development to our town. Something else we've been doing to streamline development is developing a Doing Business in Groton guide. This is for existing and new businesses that want to locate here. We're almost done with this document, just kind of going through some final formatting. And that's something that we think will be a big help to businesses within town that want to locate here. One of the biggest, if not the biggest game changer that you'll hear us talk about and in January will be coming before you to talk about this in depth, is tax increment financing. The biggest takeaway on tax increment financing is this is a program that spurs development that would not normally happen but for this increment in financing and how we're able to drive growth to an area that we haven't seen before. So I think we've all seen downtown Groton, our Route One, the Plaza where Big Y, Bennys, that general area, wishing that something more would happen there for the past thirty years, but nothing has. Tax increment financing can help fund that financing gap and make new development happen that otherwise wouldn't, at no cost to the taxpayers. What happens is there's a growth in the tax base and we take a portion of that growth and apply it towards infrastructure or other types of improvements that would normally have to happen as part of development. The two areas that we're looking at, that downtown area as well as center Groton up at 117 and 184, that 117 and 184 intersection project, we have a developer who's been working with us for about a year. We don't have a formal submission yet, but he's proposing an eighty million dollar mixed juice development there. That development would not happen without tax increment financing. These are just some of the plans that he's shown us of what he wants to do at that intersection. Again, these are things we can get into at the end with some questions or when we go over tax increment financing next month. One of the key items that was recommended in the market analysis was for us to create a standalone economic development website. And this is something that we've been working on for a number of months. It just was released about two weeks ago. We're very proud of it. And this is something that will be our number-one way of marketing the town, the digital platform. Developers are looking to find Groton. They type in Groton and they come to this. And it's, this is something that is an ever-evolving site. It's not a one-and-done. We just put it up there and, you know, hands off, great, we're all done. Every week, we have to put a lot of staff time putting new information up on here. There's a fantastic video that we did working with our library department. If any of you haven't seen it, I would strongly encourage you to watch it. It's about four minutes long. I could show it at the end of the presentation if no one's seen it, but I didn't want to take up too much of your time. We also did some new branding and how to market Groton. That was another recommendation. We did a contest in town, and this is what came out of it, and we're very proud of it. This is going in all of our new marketing materials. Another big initiative that we'll also talk to you about shortly in executive session in a little bit more detail is the marketing of key public properties for redevelopment, the Mystic Education Center, Groton Heights, the Groton Gateway, or the Sealy School, as well as 529 Gold Star Highway. These are properties that we're not just sticking a for-sale sign out in front and waiting for someone to call. We've been doing a lot of advertising and trade publications, reaching out to regional and national developers, doing marketing brochures, getting the word out there of these great opportunities in some key areas within the town. Some other marketing materials that we've been developing that will be pushed out onto our webpage are just general marketing materials about why Groton's great, how can we get people to move here, and how can we get people to relocate their businesses here. Another project, again, trying to build on that sense of place and letting people know how to get around, we all know how to get around Groton, but new businesses, new people, tourism, they don't know necessarily where everything is. I think people get confused enough between Groton, Long Point, knowing, the town, the city, you know, what a different area, center Groton, downtown Groton. It gets very confusing to outsiders and I think even some people that live within the town. So this is a project that we got some funding in the last budget, looking at signage and directional signage around town, trying to create a consistent theme. And in this year's capital improvement plan, we'll actually be asking the council and the RTM for some money to be implementing some of these signs. We've been working with New London as well as the city of Groton on the Thames River, Heritage Park, also looking, we received a state grant from CT Next in this effort to look at Groton as an innovative place within the state. It's a state effort. We received about a nine-hundred thousand dollar grant. We're one of four regions in the state to get this. And it's something, again, we could spend probably an hour talking about that project in and of itself, but an exciting effort that our economic development team has been driving. We've also been looking at climate change and sea level rise, as well as other extreme weather events. The Nature Conservancy about a year and a half ago was looking at resilience in the town and some of the impacts of sea level rise over time. This is a project that they did on their own. It didn't cost the town any money. We're also working with Yukon right now on a grant looking at extreme weather events, as well as a number of other projects along those lines. Something that always excites a lot of people is all the new construction and building activity that we have been seeing in town. A lot of new restaurants. If you haven't checked some of these out, I implore you to do that. Some folks aren't even aware of where some of these are. Mignotta, great Mexican restaurant in downtown. If you haven't been there yet, I strongly encourage you. New businesses in Mystic. This is something that really is a true, great example of homegrown mixed juice development. When people say, oh, mixed juice development isn't going to work in Groton, it's working really well in Mystic, and it's not just driven by tourism. We're seeing the growth in new restaurants and businesses there that is being serviced by people that live in the region. Housing. We have a new apartment complex going up on Route 12 over by Gunji Wamp Road. There's Branford Manor. We worked with the city of Groton for about a year. Development Corporation-related purchased this property, and they're investing about eighteen million dollars into this project. Central Hall, if you haven't been to downtown Mystic lately, it's being built. The first level is constructed with steel. We're hoping that they keep that momentum going. We also have a very active community development block grant program, Community Development Office. This past year, we received eight hundred thousand dollars to help with some redevelopment in Mystic River Homes. And out of the three of the last four years, we've received an eight hundred thousand dollar grant from the state for that. We also have some new businesses going to, coming to Groton. These are just a couple of examples. In addition to Beard Brewery, we have Mystic Cheese that's partnering with them, as well as, sorry, skipped ahead there, the new U-Haul building. And Thayer Mahan is a new defense contractor that is located down on Leonard Drive. Just some facelifts and facade improvements, expansions of businesses or relocations around town. Again, these are all things that are revamping, renovating properties, adding to our tax base. So tying all of this together, that sense of place, that's something that we really need to focus on in Groton if we want to make this a place where people want to locate their businesses and where people want to come to. As our population is aging, as our housing stock is getting older, we need new investment here if we want to grow the grand list. Again, an incredible opportunity that we have right now with Electric Boat. Over the next five, 10, 15 years, we could see over 10,000 people hired to work in this area. There's new positions, but there's also an incredible amount of positions that EB will be replacing due to the attrition and turnover in jobs, retirements at that company. So that's something that's really a fantastic opportunity for us. So how does that tie into what we do? Again, I can't stress enough the amazing opportunity that we have right now, the momentum that we're building. All the developers, a lot of the regional agencies are really keeping their eye on Groton because the number of projects that we have going on right now that are attracting a lot of investment interest. This is a teamwork effort. It's not just something, I mean, we work very well as a team, but it's not just the Office of Planning and Development Services. We need plowed streets, well-maintained roads and sidewalks. We need great libraries and senior centers and public safety and parks and recreation and open space. And all of those components together help play into that sense of place. And you could follow up and we could keep doing all these great initiatives, but if those other systems aren't working and aren't well-invested in the town, we're not going to get people that want to live here and want to relocate their businesses here. So that's kind of the speed dating of the Office of Planning and Development Services and just touching upon some of the initiatives that we're working on. We handed out a packet to all of you, which included kind of a yearly overview of some of the projects that we're doing, some handouts on different initiatives. And at this point in time, I'd love to answer any questions. Any of us could, and any of the initiatives that we're working on.
Councilor Burke?
I was looking at the page seven in the back about the project construction status, and I'm just slightly confused because some of the information was printed in twice. Was that intentional or was there certain things not done in our packet?
Such as?
Harry's Wine was listed twice. Home and Salon and Spa was listed twice, right on page seven. Was that different projects within it or?
It could have been different projects or different building permits that we're taking as part of those projects. I can double-check on both of those. We certainly weren't trying to, yeah, to pad the list. That may have just been a copy and paste error there.
It just went down from Harry's Wine and Spirits all the way down to Downcasters, which was doubled, everything was doubled. I just wanted to confirm that. Maybe it was a permit thing. I just wanted to check on it.
Very well could have been a typo. I apologize on that.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask, but is this Nautilus Dock time? Can I ask you a question about that? What is the timeframe? We just got the good news about the money coming through from Nautilus Dock. How soon can that be in place? Is summer too soon to hope for? Is it a year out? Is it like a prefab dock that they can put in place?
We just received notification of that. And as with many of these projects, it's a collaboration. I actually happened to be in the meetings months ago when we were discussing moving forward with that. And there were some logistical challenges with the Navy, whether or not they had to go to a big Navy or is it going to be locally controlled. Ultimately, there was somewhat of a verbal agreement that the Navy would take over the project if and when the funding was provided. So I think we're in discussions at the moment with the Navy regarding them handling it. I don't believe that the docks will be in the spring or summer. I think that's probably too optimistic. We have to get through a final design phase. Preliminary design's been done. We also have to get appropriate state and federal permits. And then, of course, the Navy will have to bid the project out. It is true, probably most of the materials will be prefab materials shipped in, but still, it's going to take several months before that's completed.
Thank you.
Who's the head of that project?
Well, it's, at this point, we have two parties involved. It's the town and it's the Navy base. So we don't have a single point of contact.
I've had some preliminary discussion with Captain Mike Scarborough. We're actually meeting next week to discuss further and part of the, just figuring out the steps of what's going to go on. The kickoff thing is they need an offer from us, basically requesting them be involved. He's, I'm, we're trying to figure out, is that just simply a resolution? But at some point, we're going to need an agreement that defines exactly how it's going to work, make sure, you know, how any change orders are going to work, any of that stuff. So we'll need some sort of agreement in place that covers everything.
Certainly would be a boon to our projects on Thames Street if we could get that added to the ports that we're starting, we're stopping at. Got to, you have to have something new all the time to make it grow.
Yeah. So we were successful in getting the seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar grant. That was pretty quick to write. I mean, it took some staff time. Unfortunately, it's, we're all so excited when we get the grant. It's like, yes, we got the grant. Okay, now we have to bid the project or design the project, bid the project and bid, and build the project. So sometimes there's a much longer lead time, unfortunately.
Yeah. And some of that wasn't done in the past, quite a bit back, because I know that there was discussions with the railroad and there was quite a bit of time put into it several years back. Not that anything would be current, but there might be a history there that would be helpful. I do know at one time, there was a plan that was developed.
Councilor Hayden?
I had a couple of quick questions. Follow-up on this. Will this dock be available for use by private boats or is it just the Thames Valley taxi? Thames Heritage Taxi?
As to my knowledge at this point, it'll be for Navy vessels and also for the water taxi alone. It would not be open for private vessels.
All right. Then back to the zoning regulations. I understand you're rewriting them now. How long? Maybe a year, two years? No idea.
Well, right now, we're on a schedule to have them adopted by Jan, you know, December 2018. That's our goal right now. That's the calendar, that's the timeline that we have, as long as we don't get any hiccup in that. We're trying to do a fair amount of public outreach. We're meeting twice a month, basically, with the Zoning Commission, working through these regulations. It's something that we certainly don't want to rush through because that's what dictates what goes where and how it's built and designed and the density and intensity of development around town.
All right. And then, I don't know if this is an appropriate place to ask, but merging the zoning and planning department or commissions or boards, I'm not sure what you call them. Is that part of this process of rewriting the zoning? Like, is it, you rewrite these and then we move the boards together as one?
Well, at the end of this, the previous town council had voted to combine the Planning and Zoning Commission effective, I think it was January 4th or 6th, 2019. So our goal is to get these regulations written now with the current zoning commission because we've been working on this project for about two years. It takes time, effort, a lot of brain power within the department, experts that we've hired, as well as a lot to ask from the Zoning Commission and members of the public if we want good input in this process. So at the end of this, yes, the Planning Commission and Zoning Commission will be combined. But that, that was a recommendation of something to look at through our regulatory audit to analyze and study, to combine the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Councilor Frank?
I read the packet and it has in here Paquonic Bridge Village Design Guidelines. And an architecture, an architect firm came in and is working on a design for Paquonic Bridge area. What exactly is that?
The Paquonic Bridge area is one of the historic villages in town. And we think it's worthy of its own separate zoning designation with design guidelines to reinforce that village character down there. We want to build on the historic structures that are there and maybe, maybe implement what was there before. For example, apartments upstairs, maybe a lawyer's office downstairs, things that are not allowed there right now by zoning. We want to make it more of a village, more of a place.
Where exactly are you considering Paquonic Bridge?
That's part of the study, actually, is defining what is Paquonic Bridge. It is.
I think of it as like Midway Oval neighborhood.
Right. It most likely is just the corridor along Route One from Paquonic Plains Park down to South Road. So the Route One strip.
So we're looking more at the commercial strip here, not necessarily the residential neighborhoods. And this is a project that we just kicked off maybe two weeks ago. So it's not something that we've already done. This is a project that we want to get a substantial amount of public input on. It's something that our long-range planning, our plan, the Plan of Conservation and Development recommended that we do this, that we look at Paquonic Plains, at that village as a corridor and try to come up with some design guidelines and how do we reinforce the historic development patterns that were there and not just get your typical suburban redevelopment? So that's the goal of the project. Again, we just started it.
And how about Thomas Road? Do you have an expected cost roundabout?
That's, I'd put that more on Public Works. We've been working on the easement part of that project. I think Gary already left, yeah, shucks. But I think you'll be hearing from us sometime in early January.
Gary's scheduled for the January 9th. The council gave a full update on that. It's fairly involved.
Great.
Councilor Robson?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can I have one more question?
Sure.
It was about the, it's the planning and zoning combination there. Is there? Is there any kind of blueprint to help meld these together and make the transition easy for them? Because I think there's a little bit of pushback.
Other places around the state have done it before. Some places have separate planning and zoning commissions, some have combined planning and zoning commissions. I think it's going to be just a bit of trial by fire for how we do the actual implementation. But the way that we're writing the regulations now, we're trying to streamline the process, lessen the number of special permits and other things that would require going before a border commission. But the actual, how it's going to happen come January of 2019, there really isn't a blueprint for it. We'll convene this new group. We'll look at how other planning and zoning commissions around the state function. They have one in Stonington. There's a number of places that we can look to, to see how they run. And I think, you know, the first few months might be a little bumpy, but I think we'll get through it.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Moravsek?
Yeah, John. Recently, I went to a number of these church bazaars and I saw a lot of people from Groton going around picking up little, you know, trinkets here and there. And I'm just wondering, is there somewhere in town where we could have a flea market? You know, maybe there's a, there's a person who doesn't want their land developed but might want to open it up for a flea market and make money that way. You know, we, the closest flea market that I know of is up in Mansfield. And there's none around in this area. And certainly, it's a big draw, it's a draw for, for the, for the town. You know, most people, and I say most people in New England, go to antique shops and sales and so forth. And I think that's, that's a big seller. You know, we shouldn't forget that.
I mean, it's something we certainly can look into as, again, as we're rewriting the zoning, but we need that developer, that person, that property owner to say, hey, I want to do this. I feel that there's a demand for that. I think a lot of places this time of year, you'll see it, at schools, they'll have fundraisers and have holiday sales and things along those lines. At churches and other public or places of assembly, we see a lot of that happening.
Rossi Mill in Stonington is a close example, anyway, for the wintertime.
I have a question.
Okay, we'll let you ask.
The Sustainable Connecticut, Counselor Parker brought us back pamphlets on that. But you indicated that town staff co-chair of the project. Are we pursuing that?
Actually, I would say, I was the co-chair on the planning working group, which is just one section of the whole Sustainable Connecticut program. I'll be attending some sessions in January to learn about the other sections of Sustainable Connecticut. And then at that point, we'll see how much staff time it will take to actually participate in this and, and decide then. So at this point, I don't know whether we're participating in it.
Okay. I would like to see us participate in that. I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels about that. I can only speak for myself. And then the other question was on the bus shelters. I understand SEAT is making some cuts. And I was just wondering if the relationship, what was, what was the relationship between the funding for the bus shelter improvements and the funding for the SEAT runs? Are they tied together or are they completely separate pots of money?
We had conversations with SEAT roughly a year ago and indicated the bus shelters as a project. Just to clarify, we believe that the bus shelters should be replaced, improved, bike racks, landscaping should be associated so that they're more functional and aesthetically pleasing. SEAT, at the time, was extremely supportive of that. They did indicate that they would have to program and budget. They indicated that they do have a capital improvement program and typically, they're interested in funding projects like that. Specific to your question, our understanding was that their operating budget and the capital budget were two different budgets. We do need to go back to them now that their budget has been finalized and find out where we stand.
If it's, if it's a choice of, if it's one pot of cash, I'd rather keep the buses running and live with the existing shelters because some of our people actually rely on the buses for, for work and getting to appointments and such, so. Counselor Ober.
I noticed in the information that was put out from the base just recently is that they want to look into some sort of a hub there at the base for transportation. And they want the SEAT buses running differently, too. So I'm just hoping that in the future, maybe there could be conversations where we could all be working together to make that happen. They might give you, they might give you a little more push. Not you personally, because I know you work hard, but I mean, push united to get these bus runs the right way.
Madam Mayor, as, as Secretary of SEAT, if you have those requirements, please send me an email. Because when I go to the next meeting, I'll bring this information up to Mike Carroll and the SEAT board. If you don't ask, you won't get.
What requirements are you speaking of?
This is about the shelters and any changes to bus routing. Certainly, you should indicate that. That would be a change to bus 11, route number 11.
I don't-
Read for the base?
Well, I, I can't guarantee it, but you can, you can send me an email and tell me what the requirements are, if you know of any, down at that hub.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll see. They could probably find out more about it than I. It was the first time I'd read about it.
And if there's any other areas where, where there's requirements for shelters that are either missing or have never, you know, were there and somehow they were taken away, let me know that. I know that they were talking about it and they were talking about putting in bus stops around the town. But like everybody else, they were cut considerable. And we're lucky we got four tires, the tires on the buses running. But they are conscientious.
So again, this is a project that we had been working with them over the past year. It's something we had invested some time on, but I think it got put on hold a little bit. Again, a sampling of things that we have done and worked on is kind of what we wanted to put on folks' radar.
John, I might indicate that our logo, the logo that you had, you might want to pass that on so we can maybe have one of the buses or carry that little, you know, logo.
So at this point, Mr. Manager, did we need to go into executive session to get updates on lease, sale, or purchase of real estate?
Can I add one thing before we do that, please?
Yes.
I just want to say, you know, for many, many, many years, I was part of the Economic Development Commission here in Groton. And then I had the pleasure of serving as liaison from the RTM because I had to give up my membership. But if, if there was any way to really tell you the difference now from what it was before, it is absolutely amazing. The people that we had before were not staffed correctly. I mean, they were, they were wonderful people, but they just couldn't do the job because they had too much on their plate. It wasn't organized the same way, whatever it might be. I sat through a lot of years where nothing happened. And now, I see so much happening that I just can't say enough good things about this group and how hard they work and, and how much difference they're going to make in our town and our city. And I want to thank you. Think you do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
And I like you all.
I agree.
Thank you.
Counselor Head had one more comment before we-
I just wanted to follow up on the combining of the zoning and planning. And the only reason I ask is because tomorrow night, the RTM votes on it. They vote to, is that they vote to object or they let it pass? And the concerns, I've heard several concerns from different RTM members that maybe it's not, the way that it'll be set up won't balance environmental concerns with economic development or community over business, you know, whatever that means. What is your position on if they need to pass it or not pass it? I want to put you on the spot, you know? What would be your guidance or recommendation?
This seat just got a lot hotter.
Or can it be changed as it goes through, you know?
Well, I, I think it's, we're always looking at ways of how can we streamline the process? And having, we have a lot of boards and commissions, we have a lot of volunteer organizations within the community. And sometimes filling the seats of those is very difficult. I think when you're thinking about balancing economic development, land preservation, sense of place and community within Groton, a lot of that really falls back onto the council and the people that you appoint to these boards and commissions. And I think, you know, we just received a resignation today from someone from the Planning Commission. We have a number of vacant seats on that. I'm trying to think, do we have any vacancies on the zoning commission? I don't think that we do.
We do as well.
Yeah. But once those groups combine, the way that the, the regulation or the ordinance that was passed by the last council that's up before the RTM tomorrow night, will have a committee that is made up of our existing Planning Commission. You could take members from the zoning commission and put them on there. So you'll have the ability to pick and choose some of the new members to that board. I don't know if John wanted to add anything else.
I just, I'll just add that I'm in favor of it, too. Of course, in Michigan, they never did have separate zoning commissions and planning commissions. Planning commissions always handle all the duties. That was never an issue. That's just the norm where I came from. And definitely, anything to streamline the process is worthwhile.
Thank you.
I know it'll be an enormous improvement for people that want to develop in this town once it's together. It'll, it'll add a lot of speed to the process. And I will, too, I know I keep bragging about you guys, but, you know, the developers I've talked with now, they're much more anxious to come into Groton than they were in the past. They're very happy with the attitude and, you know, it's just a vast improvement.
Thank you. The one thing I will put on your radar is come October, November of 2018, depending on where we are with the regulations, if we hit a few snags, we might be coming back to you to ask you to amend that ordinance to give us a few more months of having a separate Planning and Zoning Commission. Because we've done so much work with the existing zoning commission, to take that to 80% and then not have them cross the finish line would be a real disaster, in my opinion. So that, that's something that we're, we're confident we can get done what we need to get done. But that's something that when we talked to the council about this initiative a few months back, we were concerned a little bit about the timeline.
Mr. Brock?
The question actually contained two, two words, economic development and environmental as well. It just kind of piqued something in my mind that we talk about. Three of the four of us actually have environmental degrees and we've held environmental positions. But at the same time, we're all involved with economic development. So in reality, we can have both as the streamlining takes place. We're not talking about watering down any protections for the community. We're talking about maintaining protections, maybe clarifying, but at the same time, promoting economic development. We can have both. It's not a matter of one or the other. We can have both as we move forward.
That balance is very important. That's good. That's very good.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, then I hereby move that the members of the Town Council Committee of the Whole, Town Manager John Burt, Manager of Economic and Community Development Paige Brock, and Planning and Development Director John Reiner go into executive session pursuant to general statutes. Do you want me to add people?
We haven't done it yet. I didn't know.
Mr. Quinn and Ms. Jones as well? Go into executive session pursuant to general statutes, section 1206D, for the purpose of discussing the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate concerning town-owned properties. I so move-
Second.
Is moved by Grantowski, seconded by Head. All those in favor of going into executive session for this purpose, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, as unanimous that we will go into executive session. Okay, we are out of executive session and we are back to our agenda. We are on 2017-0285, building permit fees. And Mr. Reiner is still with us.
Sure. So again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. With me is Kevin Quinn, our Manager of Inspection Services. And what we're proposing, we have not increased our building permit fees in town for a number of years, 18 years. And we're looking at bringing our fees not up to exorbitant amounts, but matching what other municipalities like us, surrounding us, are utilizing for their fees. The way that our fee structure is put together, the ordinance section of where it is in the town code of ordinances allows the council to adopt new fees via resolution. We do not need to have a public hearing on this matter. Up on the screen is a chart showing some example town projects around town, what the project cost is, what the current permit fees are, and what the proposed permit fees would be under these new proposed fees. You know, yeah, some of these bigger, larger developments, the fee increase would go up a bit. We spend a considerable amount of time reviewing these plans. But when you start looking at new single-family housing, sheds, small additions, you know, those are the things that we're going to see more of. During our last budget cycle, one of the things that was asked of us by both the council and the RTM are, what are other ways that we can increase revenues? And one of the things that we programmed and told both the council and I believe the RTM was that we were going to be looking at increasing both of our planning fees and our building permit fees, but we wanted to analyze what other municipalities were doing. We did see that our planning fees were pretty consistent today with what other municipalities are doing, but that our building permit fees were lower. So it's kind of where we are. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, Kevin?
How much revenue would you generate by increasing fees? What would be the increase in revenue?
One of the things that we tried looking at year over year, a comparison of what we had, say, last year, this year in fees versus what they would be at the new number. And the only way we could calculate that was to literally go through every single application that we had and calculate the old versus the new. But it would be, it could be a 20% increase. It could be a number greater than that in our overall fees.
And what is your overall income now?
It's actually, it's in our report that we've given to you, I believe. You know, that was something we created for a credit rating agency. I want to say we're somewhere in the couple hundred thousand dollar range.
Up to as much as $300.
Now, as much as up to about $300,000.
So you're talking somewhere in the range of-
Maybe another 60.
$60,000.
Yes.
I'm just going to, the other thing that I, I think about is if you're going to increase fees, is that going to be, do we have a competitive edge for development in the town because we have low fees? Does that inspire people to want to work in Groton?
I don't think so, not necessarily. I mean, we're, we seem to be on the low end of other municipalities.
What do you mean by on the low end of fees or?
Fees, as far as fees go.
Are we on the low end of development?
At this point, I would say no. I think development lately has been very robust. There's a lot of stuff going on. We're very busy.
Counselor Schmidt, did you have a personal?
I just wondered, it seems like you have a new fee for a certificate of zoning compliance fee.
No, we presently have a fee for a letter of zoning compliance, which is $25, which again, was on the low side. For the, for the amount of time that I have to put in to do the research before I write that letter, actually, $50 is still a bargain.
Is there consensus that the manager should prepare a resolution for our next quarterly scheduled meeting to adopt these proposed fee schedules?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of instructing the manager to prepare the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so move. Sorry, I don't know if it's you or John, but one of you two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please.
And I think that's it for planning, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So we're on to 2017-0294, Appointment of Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee. Do we have interested, this is a committee that will take a look at everybody who wants to serve on the boards and commissions. So Counselor Schmidt is interested, Counselor Head, and Counselor Moravsek. Anyone else interested or is that good? Okay, so then we have Counselor Head, Counselor Schmidt, and Counselor Moravsek will serve on the-
I nominate Mr. Head for children.
I get to a point. You guys, you guys can do that when you have your meeting. All right.
Do we need four?
Do we need four? And no, that's what I was asking earlier.
We can have up to four.
We can have up to four.
You've been four previously.
Well, if someone would like to be the fourth, I just thought it was odd that a committee would have four members because then it would be potential to be split and have ties, which is never a good thing when you're in committees. So it's your choice. If someone else wants to volunteer- If someone else wants to volunteer, that's fine, otherwise, I'm content with three. I think it's better to have an odd number. Okay, so we're set with that. So then that leaves 2017-0290.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
About this. They approved, the previous council approved a person, an appointment policy, basically. So if you're a registered Democrat, you have to go through the DTC, registered Republican goes through the RTC, but an unaffiliated now comes directly to the town council. I wanted to revisit that. I don't know-
You bring it up at the meeting.
Okay.
So that would go through, then, the Personnel and Appointments Committee and then be brought back to the full council for a vote. Would you like to make that referral?
Would you just, please?
Thank you. All right, so the only thing left is 2017-0290, Town Attorney Appointment.
To make a recommendation that we develop an RFP and go out to bid for a town attorney. And if the existing-
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
I make a motion that we go out for an RFP for a town attorney. And if the existing town attorney feels that they want to get in on it, they're more than welcome. But I think the one that we had, what we have now, has been with the town of Groton.
So is there a second for Representative Morawskij's motion?
Second.
So moved by Morawskij, seconded by Schmidt. Okay, go ahead.
They've been with the town for about 30 years and they've done a very good job. I have nothing against them, but we ought to go out and see what else is out there. And somebody said that there may not be a town attorneys available in the area. I beg differ with them. There are. I've spoken to two different attorneys.
How far away are they? Counsel Parker?
They're within a region, they're in-
Within a region here?
They're in New London County.
Okay. Mr. Burt?
Obviously, I would develop or work with our purchasing department to develop the RFP. I just wouldn't want, I'd want a robust number of attorneys at the firm so they represent different specialties.
I think at one point, our present attorney was the only one recommended by CCM. I don't know if that's true today or not, but you could ask.
So the resolution that, the motion that was made, rather, does not preclude us from selecting the same attorney.
Right.
It's just opening it up so others may bid and then we can make a decision as to who we would like to select. As right now, we have them serving temporarily, correct? For 120 days. Okay, is there any other discussion on this particular matter? Yes.
So I understand we have 120 days to choose to either keep this attorney or choose a new one.
Right.
Okay.
So I assume when the RFP is put together, that will be taken into consideration so that we would have time to get the returns and everything.
And cases that the existing attorneys are handling would most likely continue if they were-
Should run out.
Until they run it out.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of going out to issuing RFP for a town attorney, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so passed unanimously.
I do have a question I wanted to ask John about the attorneys. Do we have any lawsuits right now that are critical?
We have a couple of things going on. We have to discuss that. There's always a couple lawsuits going on.
One other, I noticed the fire chief is still here. Was there, did you wish to speak to us again or is this just for your viewing pledge?
We're just making ourselves available. It's a question for us. It's on the record or off the record, it depends.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so consideration of committee referral items as per town council referral list, is there anything that is urgent for us to take care of tonight? No? Any other business?
I think you were part of the parade, I want to thank you for that. Really appreciate it.
Very nice. All right, seen done. Move to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
By Parker, is there a second? Head? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously.
Thank you.